So I'll change a little bit the talk and thank you for the extra time. So in the laboratory, we have been trying to understand gene regulation during vertebrate development and have, while a lot of work has been done in the analysis of how mRNA levels change, less has been done on how translation is regulated. And after the work of Jonathan Weisman and Nicky Nolia, we capitalize on this technique that we first implemented in a vertebrate embryo to try to uncover new codes that the embryo might be telling us. So today I'll tell you about two small stories. One is how we are using the ribosome to decode regions of mRNAs that are thought to be untranslated, but indeed are coding for peptides. And a second part of this, a second story where we have found that reading of the, by the ribosome of mRNAs depending on the codon composition actually causes differential mRNA steady-state levels and stability. So this is one of the problems of the first part of the talk. So as you know, there has been a tremendous revolution on the non-coding area of the genome. But in many cases, the way non-coding regions were defined was basically because open reading frames were less than 100 nucleotides, mainly on conservation constraints, basically on the third nucleotide wobble, and also synteny across species. But now with translation by the ribosome, we can really define regions. And this has been done to some extent across different laboratories from Ignolia, where they saw use translation efficiency, while in the case of Goodman suggested that most of these regions are really not, they don't have the characteristics of bona fide translated genes as well as from the shared laboratory. So, and indeed, we know that many genes that are thought to be non-coding were actually later shown to be coding, and we were trying to use ribosome footprints to really define the coding potential of the genome. And this is just one example in Drosophila, where the Kagayama Laboratory identified in a known non-coding gene that indeed that encodes for small peptides that are used to then cleave a bigger protein and that causes effects in the cuticle of Drosophila. So Ariel Basini, an extremely talented postdoc in the laboratory, then took the approach of ribosome footprinting and implemented it during early seagriff fish development. So here, this is a small introduction, since I assume that most of you might not be familiar with this system. This is a two-hour embryo where you see 64 cells on top of the yolk, and this is about two-hour time course, and then we move on to later stages. You can see that in 24 hours, you actually have an embryo with an eye and a brain and muscle. Anyway, we basically took those different time points during development and look at ribosome footprinting and tried to develop high resolution. And Ariel was actually quite amazing. He was able to develop quite high resolution in a vertebrate system. And this looks very different from the meta plots where, that we got at the beginning. But you can see now that by looking at the footprints of the ribosomes, in fact, by just focusing on the reads that are present on the P side of the ribosome and doing this meta plot and coloring the ribosome footprints by different colors depending on whether they are in frame or out of frame, you can see that in this meta plot, most of the reads are in blue, and we obtained over 90% of the reads in frame with the coding sequence. And what this told us is that, well, if we can get such a high resolution in a meta gene approach, maybe for individual, this must come from individual genes, and we should be able to use this trinucleotide periodicity of the ribosome through ribosome footprint to really define coding regions that are being translated with that trinucleotide periodicity. So this is the hypothesis. So the genome-wide resolution of the ribosome footprint should be reflecting the individual gene resolution of these footprints. And if we have ribosomes that are reading in frame, for regions that we don't know are coding or not coding, we should be able to define new coding regions. So this is just the individual gene basis. So these are all the ribosome footprints I'm going to show you are, just one second, in frame. Let me just try a different one. All right, so, so let's see. I'm running out of, okay. So are color-coded, and you can see that for this particular gene which is acting, and we know where the coding region is, you see that, of course, most of the ribosome footprints are in blue. And the point is that if we didn't know where the coding sequence was among all this coding sequence, you can see that this is clearly the coding sequence that is being translated by the frame of these ribosomes. While the RNA sig, which is, it's, has, sorry, because, do you guys have extra batteries for the pointers back there? So, while the RNA sig is really evenly distributed in all three frames. So based on this idea, we developed ORF score, which basically uses two main principles. Thank you so much. Hopefully, I won't use up the batteries for your talk. So we use for, we develop ORF scores to identify the coding regions in the genome, and they basically use, this method uses two principles. One is that there is a bias of the ribosome footprints in the, in the frame. So if these are bona fide reads, reading that particular reading frame, we would expect that they are in frame. So this develop, this analysis basically looks at the bias and the distribution of reads for the right frame versus the wrong frame. So if you have reads like that, we will give it a positive score, meaning that most of the ribosome footprints are in the correct frame, while if it's unbiased, it would be close to zero. And if it's biased to the wrong open reading frame, we will give it a negative score. And then in parallel, we measure the coverage of ribosome footprints over that particular coding sequences, and this would be the in-frame, and this would be defined as high, and this would be defined as low, where each of the gray dots are codons, and each of the blue reads represent in-frame read over that particular codon. So using these two parameters, the bias distribution of ribosome footprints towards one particular frame, and the coverage of reads over that particular open reading frame, we then looked at known and unknown coding sequences. So we first tested our model in all the genes that are known to predict for coding sequences, and in particular, we focuses on, on small open reading frames. In particular, in this case, coding sequences for 20 to 100 amino acids that have, that are well-known and conserved. And you can see that the ORF score is a, and the coverage is able to define those regions that are coding versus those that are present in the 3' UTR that we use as a negative control, suggesting that this method can distinguish coding versus non-coding regions. And then we applied that to a different data sets of none, of published non-coding RNAs in, in this case, in seagriff fish, from different laboratories, from the Bartel Laboratory and from the Shear Laboratory, as well as genes from Ensembl. And you can see that many of these predicted non-coding RNAs, based on the presence of ribosome footprints and the fact that those ribosome footprints are in frame with that particular coding sequence, appear to be coding genes, or at least appear to be encoding for protein. This is just one example of a predicted non-coding RNA at that time, and you can see how most of the ribosome footprints are green, which means that they are in the frame three, which corresponds to that particular open reading frame, suggesting that this gene is likely coding for that protein. So using this method, we defined a large number of, of de novo coding genes, if you wish, that had been predicted to be non-coding. And in collaboration with Tobias Walter, at that time at Yale, we asked the question whether, well, these are, appear to be translated based on ribosome footprinting, but do they indeed produce a protein product? So we did mass spectrometry, and indeed, for several cases, we were able to find, one second, we were able to find that indeed, the regions that we find translated can give rise to peptides that we can identify by mass spectrometry, suggesting that not only they are translated by the ribosome, but they produce stable protein enough to be detected. So, so we had a pretty good resolution of the ribosome footprint with most of the reads in one frame, and in some other cases, you have a bias distribution, but that bias is not towards one frame, but towards two of the frames. Still, it's a biased distribution, and you can use that to apply this method of ORF score to detect de novo, small open reading frames, and we use that in previously published data from human. And using that approach, we identify 118 small open reading frames in humans. So in collaboration with Nicolas Rzieski, we wanted to ask, well, are these conserve, or how many of these small open reading frames that we find are conserve across species? And we use a approach developed by Nicolas Rzieski called MiCPDP that basically uses a phylo-csf variation to define synonymous versus non-synonymous changes flanked by stretches of non-synonymous changes. And using this approach, we found that 60 of the small open reading frames defined in seagriff fish are conserved, and, and we found actually 160 are conserved, small open reading frames that were independently defined from the ORF score. So just as a summary for this first part, what we have been able is to capitalize in the reading frame of the ribosome to identify novel coding sequences in genes that were predicted to be non-coding. And I think the beauty is that we are really combining not just ribosome footprinting, but also conservation with mass spectrometry, and this has resulted in a significant number of genes that we are now studying by loss-of-function approaches. And at the same time, it also defines non-coding RNAs that indeed don't have any ribosome footprints as far as we can tell. So this also allows us to identify bona fide non-coding RNAs. So at the moment, we are trying to investigate the functions of these genes, and we can think of different scenarios. On one hand, they could be, they could have a regulatory function of translation that promotes decay or stability, and I'll tell you more about story on this context. And they could provide localization of the mRNA to specific places. For example, if, if this peptide allows you to localize, or has a signal that gets the ribosome to a particular place, that mRNA will be localized to that domain. Or they could produce small proteins that might function as micropeptides such as signaling, ligands, or catalysts, as I show you in the case of Drosophila, or inhibitors that somehow can either block a particular protein or bring some scaffolding proteins together. And just one example of one of the proteins, or one of the mRNAs that we found is translated, was also found by two different laboratories, Riverside Lab and the Shear Laboratory, to be a signal, a secreted signaling molecule called toddler or elabella, that is a ligand for a transmembrane receptor that is important for the movement of endodermal cells in the fish. And just to show you in this cartoon, this is the wild-type embryo where you have movement of these cells in this direction upwards, and in the case of the mutant, which is called toddler because they, they basically don't move properly, you see that the cells are defective in the movement. So this is, we think is, is a, is a, there is a long history of work in this field where through multiple approaches, I've been able to define the coding potential of different regions in the genome. And in our case, we combine ribosome footprint with mass spectrometry and conservation. But this is really, there are many laboratories involved in these, in these studies. So the second part of the talk is related to our interest in trying to understand how gene expression is regulated to shape embryonic development, and how, I think, we are trying to define, or we are using ribosome footprinting and translation to define or redefine codes in the regulatory codes in the embryo. So we're interested primarily from a biological perspective in the maternal-to-septic transition, and this is a universal transition that happens in all animals, where after fertilization, the egg leaves of maternally provided mRNAs and proteins because the nucleus is transcriptionally inactive. So those mRNAs give rise to the instructions for the egg to undergo the first hours of development, and after several hours, many of those instructions are degraded. And this represents one of the most profound remodelings of gene expression in biology, I think, where you have thousands of, or mRNAs encoding for thousands of genes that are deposited, and many of them need to be destroyed in the absence of transcription. So it really provides a unique opportunity to study in post-transcription mechanisms of gene regulation. And this has been known for many years, and this is the work from many different laboratories across different species. And among our contribution is the fact that we have found that microRNAs are important in the regulation of part of that maternal history. So I found a microRNA called Mi430 that is expressed in blue, and it is in charge of the degradation of many maternal mRNAs. However, that only accounts for 20% of the regulation, and we were wondering what is the rest of the regulation coming from? What are the proteins that regulate this, 80% of these maternal mRNAs for destruction? As a way to try to define the code that regulates mRNA stability in general. And this is just a profile of gene expression where each line represents a gene from, in six hours of development, and you can see how many of these mRNAs are very high, and they undergo rapid degradation during these four hours. And we can divide those thousands of mRNAs that get degraded in different pathways depending on whether they require transcription or not for the decay. And you can see that there is a group of mRNAs that it's degraded independent of transcription, and another set of mRNAs that depends on transcription. This is independent of microRNAs, and this is dependent on microRNAs. So while we were looking for the factors that mediate this regulation, we were really focused on, if this is the depiction of an mRNA with ribosomes translating the coding sequence, we were really focused on the, on the RNA binding proteins, thinking, well, most of the regulation that has been shown, has been shown in the 3' UTR, and you have proteins that either regulate translation or mRNA decay. But if you think about it, the most profound, the most abundant protein reading the RNA is really the ribosome. So could it be that the ribosome is regulating the stability of these mRNAs in vivo? And there is some precedent from that. On one hand, the ribosome is regulating mRNA stability in surveillance mechanism for NMD, nonsense meditative decay, when it finds a stop codon where it shouldn't be in relationship with introns, it causes the mRNA to be degraded. And also, there was a really beautiful work from Jeff Koller's lab, while we were doing this work, where they showed that different codons in yeast might regulate the mRNA half-life. However, you can imagine that yeast and vertebrates or animals have a very different energy requirements, so it's unclear whether the, this phenomena of regulation of, by codons of mRNA stability will persist across different species, and if the call, the mechanism persists, whether the, the code is the same that you would find in yeast. So the question that Ariel Basini, this absolutely terrific postdoc, that is starting a position now at the Star Wars Institute, was, is there any difference in the stability of these mRNAs caused by translation? And do we see mRNAs that are more stable or less stable depending on whether they are translated or not? So the, the basic idea is to basically block, take mRNAs either in the presence of translation or block the translation, and see whether they have a different rate of decay. And the way he did that was quite interesting. So he basically took all the transcripts of the embryo and randomly fragmented them, and then isolated these random fragments of 400 to 600 nucleotides and placed them in a model transcript. Okay? And this transcript has now the whole transcriptome as a coding sequence, and the same 5' and the same 3' UTR. So just imagine a population of mRNAs where the 5' is the same, the 3' is the same, but the coding sequence is made by frac, random fragments of the whole transcriptome, okay? And they all happen to have a start site that is common, an AOG, and a binding site for a morpholino, which is an antisense, it's a, morpholinos are antisense oligonucleotides that basically just block translation. So we basically have the same 5' UTR, the same 3' UTR, the whole transcriptome in fragments, and then a binding site for something that will inhibit translation. And then he can actually in vitro transcribe that, make that into RNA, put it back into an embryo, and ask, how is the stability of this mRNA different depending on whether there is translation of that population or whether there is not translation of that population? Okay? So this is just, this is a very complex population, and I mean complex avogadro number, if you remember your days in chemistry, because we never go through a circular plasmid. So if we sequence 100 million reads in two replicates, the coverage is about 99%, but the identity of the same reads is about 1%. So it's really, it's really deep. So then we inject it, and after several hours, then we ask, what is the stability of those transcripts with time depending on translation? Because of course, the ribosome translates the codons, we actually just counted codons, and we asked, is there any set of codons that is enriched in the mRNAs or in the population when we allow translation? And is there any set of codons that is depleted with respect to this control when we allow translation? And because we wanted to find common themes of regulation, we did this in seagriff fish, and we did that in, in Senopus. And this is what we observed. So this is what we call the codon stabilization index, which basically is a measure of the statistical significant enrichment of specific codon sequences in the presence of translation, and this is a statistical significant depletion of these particular codons in the presence of translation, suggesting that when these are translated, the mRNAs are a little bit more stable, and when these are translated, the mRNAs are a little bit less stable. And this is actually quite conserve, or seems to be quite conserve between these two distant species, Senopus and seagriff fish, because you see that these mRNAs cluster, these codons cluster quite similarly between the two species. So is this telling us about a regulatory code that measures the stability of mRNAs in the embryo? Or is it tell us, telling us about some other sequences that happen to regulate stability and just happen to coincide with the sequence of these codons? So is this really regulatory motif, or is this really the coding, the codon sequence that is shaping the mRNA stability? And to test that, we did a simple experiment that basically, if this is really the codons per se that are regulating the stability, they should be in frame, in the frame that is being translated. If it's a regulatory sequence, then you wouldn't care so much whether it's in frame or out of frame. So to distinguish between those two possibilities, we basically developed two transcripts that have exactly the same sequence except for one nucleotide that is inserted in one of them and causes a frame shift, okay? And we designed those two transcripts in a way that in one case, it reads mostly blue codons, and in another case, it reads mostly red codons. And those blue and red codons were the ones that I am showing here. The red codons are the ones that are supposed to cause stabilization, and the ones that are, the blue are supposed to cause destabilization. We took those mRNAs, put them back in the embryo, and measured their stability over time. And we observed that there is a dramatic difference of these two transcripts that have almost exactly the same sequence except for a single nucleotide instability. So this is an northern blood that is measured, the RNA levels, the darker it is, the more RNA there is. You can see how this mRNA stays more stable than this mRNA that is rapidly degraded over time. And we have this for multiple examples, suggesting that the codon identity of those transcripts is determining the stability of the mRNA. Okay. So could this be really shaping the mRNA decay in vivo during this universal transition that we are interested about, where thousands of mRNAs are undergoing decay? So to ask that question, what we said is, well, let's look at the RNA fault change. So how much those mRNAs undergoing decay over time between the, the early time point and the late time point? And we looked in a cumulative plot for the distribution of these mRNAs, and this is the distribution of this, the full change of those mRNAs, and it also works with, when we just look at the half-life. And we asked, well, can we really separate those mRNAs based on the presence of these codons? Let's say the mRNAs that have most of the red codons, or more of the red codons, and the mRNAs that have more of these blue codons. And do those groups have different stability in vivo? So we would expect if that is the case, that now this, this group separates into two different groups. And indeed, we find that the mRNAs that are enriched in these red codons that we call optimal are much more stable than those mRNAs that are enriched in the blue codons. And this is really extremely, is extremely significant, and we only find this dramatic separation when we look at the, those that have microRNA target sites which causes destabilization. Just because of time constraints, I don't have time to show you the data, but this is indeed depending on translation. So if now we treat this with an inhibitor of translation, cycloexamide, now these two curves come together to the gray curve. So the differential stability of these transcripts depends on translation by the ribosome. So we are, and it also depends on the frame. If we count those codons out of frame, which give us the same sequence bias, they don't have differential mRNA stability. So basically, this depends on translation and the frame of those codons. So the next question we asked, well, is this a conserve mechanism of regulation across species? So we have gene expression from published data from different laboratories in Senopus, Mouse, and Drosophila, and we asked, if we use the code that we identified in seagriff fish, experimentally defined in the embryo, and blue and red codons, do we find that those blue and red codons can explain the differential mRNA stability in the embryos of these different species? And indeed, we were ecstatic to see that if we now select those mRNAs enriched in red codons are much more stable than those mRNAs enriched in blue codons for different species. And this effect, of course, decreases the farther we go in evolutionary time, and we expect that that code, code to some extent is, is different, but we see a general conservation of these different, of this code that we identified in, in seagriff fish. So this tells us that the code, the codons that are translated by the ribosome have an effect on the mRNA stability of, during development, in this case, is in non-steady-state condition. But could this have an influence on the steady-state mRNA levels across different tissues? Of course, when we think about the different tissues of a human, for example, we think about transcription. We think that mainly those differences are driven by how highly or how lowly those mRNAs are transcribed. So if we now just look at the mRNA levels and ask, are those levels correlated or anti-correlated with the specific codons? So which are the mRNAs that are more, more highly expressed that, with a particular codon? And we look across the 46 different tissues in human, we find that there is a set of codons, in this line is codons, in this case is tissues, there are a set of codons here that are correlated with highly expressed mRNAs across tissues, and there is a set of codons that are anti-correlated with highly expressed genes. And now we ask, could it be that those, and this is nothing new, I mean, we have known about the codon bias on gene expression for ages. And this has always been explained from a point of view of, well, the genes that are more highly expressed just tend to use some specific codons so that they are better translated, for example. But not from the point of view that maybe those codons are determining the mRNA levels of those transcripts. So if the codons were determining the mRNA levels of those So if the codons were determining the mRNA levels of those transcripts to some extent, we would, maybe there is some correlation with the codon optimality code that we defined in the embryo. Okay, those red and blues. So if there was some correlation, we would expect that these guys are mostly red, and these guys are mostly blue. And indeed, there is some correlation where you see the optimality that we define in sebrafish during embryo genesis in the maternal-to-psychotic transition, with the MRNAs that are highly expressed across these tissues, and MRNAs that are lowly expressed, suggesting that indeed, those codons might be influencing the steady-state mRNA levels of those transcripts. So just as a summary conclusions of this part, what I've shown you is that we have defined the codon optimality code in, in, in animals, or at least in sebrafish and Senopus, we see, we see that that has, can explain the differential mRNA stability during this universal transition, and we see that this at the level of codons, and surprisingly, also at the level of amino acids, can explain the difference, to some extent, the differential mRNA expression across tissues. So I think this is how we all know the genetic code, this is kind of our Rosetta Stone. And I think that with these experiments that Ariel has developed, we can think about the genetic code having an extra layer that really provides the effect of those codons on the stability of those MRNAs within the tissue. And you can see that, and this also has, at the level of amino acids, we also see an effect. And this is quite conserve between, in the, in embryo genesis between sebrafish and Senopus, although we think that based on the data that we have across tissues, that this code might be different across different tissues. In data that I haven't, I think I haven't included here, we see that, and you, of course, are wondering whether this is related to TRNA, and to some extent, there is some correlation with TRNA. So the red codons, the stabilizing ones, tend to be encoded by TRNAs that are more ha, more highly expressed by sequencing. So, so we have sequenced TRNAs in, in development, and the blue codons tend to be expressed by those TRNAs that have lower level of expression, that is very significant. However, it cannot explain all the effect. And also, you can imagine that, we also have looked at the mechanism, so we know that this is related to the length of the polyatelle regarding the stability of the mRNA. So the ones that have these non-optimal codons tend to have shorter polyatelle and be degraded faster than those that have optimal codons. And you can imagine that this mechanism really integrates not just the TRNA levels, but multiple aspects, including probably the structure of the RNA, including the amino acid, and we in fact see a strong correlation also with amino acid. So this would be a very interesting mechanism to study. And the implications are diverse, I think, not only at the level of tissue expression across, across different tissues, depending on the TRNA levels that Ruben, I think, is going to talk, talk about, but also regarding mRNA localization and stability. So for TRNAs, for MRNAs that you don't want them to be degraded, you can block translation, transport them to the synapse, for example, and then when you activate translation, you unleash this mechanism of regulation. And it's also been, work from different laboratories have shown that this is related also to, two more cells change the TRNA composition and, and might have an effect on mRNA levels. So finally, just to thank everybody in the lab, this is mainly the work of Ariel Basini, which is just moved, I think I have him here, Ariel Basini, who just moved to Star Wars. It's a wonderful environment, and there are computational postdoc positions available, so if you are interested, just let me know. Thank you.